Dr. Cavassos.
Present.
Ms. Chen.
Present.
Mrs. Donner.
Present.
Mr. Hosang.
Present.
Mrs. Hunley.
Present.
Mr. Riffel.
Present.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Present. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda for this work session?
Madam Chair, I move the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley and Mrs. Donner. Is it all there?
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. All right, and with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Heron.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. We're pleased to present our second of two budget work discussions this evening, and our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Ewing, will lead off this evening.
Yes, I need to read my disclosure statement. As a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest in the FY twenty-five school budget because my husband is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This afternoon, we will continue discussing preliminary information related to the fiscal year twenty-five operating budget. I will provide an overview of the state revenue budget and review expenditure information that was shared at the last budget work session. The review of expenditures will include the alignment with our strategic plan goals, and we will provide an overview of additional budget requests beyond those already discussed and review next steps. This is a preliminary look at the governor's proposed budget and may change depending on actions of the General Assembly over the next two months. At our last budget work session, we only reviewed mandatory expenditures and expenditures to maintain our current levels of service related to staffing requirements, as well as non-negotiable expenditure increases from contractual commitments that we have. There are additional cost increases and savings that we will present this afternoon. This table shows a comparison of our state revenue as presented in the governor's proposed budget and compared to our fiscal year twenty-four amended budget. The governor's introduced budget includes the state's share of routine re-benchmarking of costs for all standards of quality or SOQ and other direct aid programs. These technical adjustments include updates for factors such as funded salaries, annual school report data used to calculate prevailing costs, inflation factors, standards of learning test score updates, enrollment updates, free lunch data updates, and projected caseloads for lottery incentive and categorical programs. The governor's budget reflects the most recent estimates of sales tax revenue dedicated to public education as computed by the Department of Taxation. These updates are technical in nature and reflect the latest economic forecast, as well as the implementation of a tax policy change to increase the taxable base beginning in fiscal year twenty-five. The revised sales tax estimates include both the one percent portion and the one-eighth percent portion that are appropriated for distribution to school divisions based on school age population. It is projected that we will see a decrease of four hundred fifty-one thousand in fiscal year twenty-five related to sales tax. The re-benchmarked budget represents the state cost of continuing direct aid programs into the next biennium with updates to the input data like average salary used in the funding formulas that determine the cost of the programs. Since ninety percent of state direct aid funding is for SOQ programs, SOQ funding is most impacted by the re-benchmarking process. As you can see from this table, our estimated increase in SOQ funding is approximately seven point three million. Incentive programs will see a decrease of approximately seven million. This decrease is related to the following items: removal of the supplemental general fund payments to school divisions for the elimination of grocery and personal hygiene taxes. The current biennial budget included re-benchmarking hold harmless funds due to the impact that COVID had on enrollment, which is no longer included in the budget. And lastly, for incentive programs, the governor's budget does not include any funds for a salary supplement in fiscal year twenty-five. These three items make up seven point nine million of our incentive programs budget for fiscal year twenty-four. There are funds included to provide the state's share of a one percent bonus payment for funded SOQ instructional and support positions in fiscal year twenty-five, which amounts to approximately three hundred seventy thousand in state revenue for us. The total projected lottery amounts in fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six are being used to fund the state's share of the cost of various programs, such as the infrastructure and operations per pupil fund, early reading intervention, K-three primary class size reduction, special education, regional tuition, and SOL algebra readiness. We are estimating an increase of approximately two hundred ninety-three thousand in this area compared to our amended fiscal year twenty-four budget. Overall, we are looking at a total increase in state funding of approximately one hundred twelve thousand dollars, or point two percent, over our current fiscal year twenty-four budget.
If I could just add to the overall big picture, this is the lowest we have ever experienced in terms of a governor's budget supporting public education. It wouldn't keep the lights on.
While building the budget, we use the strategic plan to guide the development of the budget to ensure that the goals align with the plan and that the budget supports the needs and goals of the school division. We will now review expenditure increases for each strategic plan goal. We have also analyzed our current budget to identify reductions to support some of the expenditure increases that we will share as well. These reductions will be reflected in a blue highlighted line on the next slides. Expenditures related to Goal One, academic achievement, college and career readiness, and shared at the previous budget workshop include anticipated increases to our costs for New Horizons and Virtual Virginia tuition, as well as two teaching positions in order to maintain our adopted class size ratios at the middle school level. We have also reviewed our elementary teacher allocation for the current year, which is budgeted at two hundred forty-five FTEs, but we currently only utilize two hundred forty-three FTEs, so we will reduce next year's elementary allocation by two in order to support the increase for middle school.
If I could just add, every slide that has a gray bar and red, we have done a lot of work in the last week to look for savings everywhere in our current budget to try to meet our needs. And so this is one of them, where we did a very close analysis of elementary enrollment, which has gone down a little bit, and what we needed in middle school, we've now taken away from elementary schools. Every where there's a red, it's taken away from current operations, and will have an impact on non-scholes.
With the expiration of the SOR III funds coming up in September twenty twenty-four, there are several positions across the division that would need to move into the operating fund in order to maintain our current level of service. Specifically, one of those positions includes site-based substitutes at each elementary, middle, and high school. There are twenty-three point five FTEs across the division. These positions are the first ones to be utilized each day for classroom instruction when teachers are absent. In order to support the addition of these FTEs for the site-based substitutes, we are proposing to reduce the reserve positions in our budget. Reserve positions are used to address increased enrollment if we have more students than we budget for. This reduction would mean that we will not have any reserve positions next year.
This could have a detrimental effect as well. If we have an influx of students, we're not expecting any grade level. It's going to increase class size, but we feel that it's something we need to look at right now is potentially reducing our overall costs. Also, one of the key things that we add almost every year are special education teachers, special education aides. We use these reserve positions each year to accommodate those needs as we receive more students into the system. So this is something we really don't want to do, but we're putting it on the table as a possibility.
This graph shows four years of data for the fill rates when a substitute accepts a daily job in a classroom due to a teacher absence. Let's look on the far left for twenty eighteen. The month of September shows that the school division had a successful substitute fill rate for teacher absences of ninety-two percent, meaning ninety-two percent of the total teacher absences during the month of September twenty eighteen were covered by a substitute. Tracking across the graph, we see a fill rate of ninety-one percent in October, ninety percent in November, and ninety-two percent in December twenty eighteen. Now, compare our current substitute fill rates for teacher absences, which are denoted by the red percentage numbers of seventy-three percent in September, sixty-nine percent in October, and seventy-six percent in November and December. We have not returned to pre-pandemic levels of substitute job fill rate percentages, but we do see a steady improvement from the previous two school years. Two reasons supporting this improvement were the implementation of the twenty-three point five FTEs, known as the site-based substitutes, and the increase of approved substitutes in the substitute pool. Therefore, we recommend these twenty-three point five positions move into the fiscal year twenty-five operating budget. Mr. Walker will now share information related to an additional request under Goal One.
Just before Mr. Walker jumps in, if we could go back again just for an additional comment, we're at seventy-three to seventy-six fill rate throughout the division. If we don't have the permanent subs continue in our system, then that will most likely go down again, and that means teachers are covering classes, and that puts undue stress on our teachers because they're covering during their planning periods. So keeping those permanent substitutes in the budget is extremely important for teacher welfare and for educating students.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Our school administrators wear many hats and have a multitude of daily responsibilities, such as supporting and leading instruction, managing the daily operations of the building, ensuring a safe, inclusive, and positive learning environment for staff and students, and challenging all students to reach their highest potential. In alignment to Goals One and Five of our strategic plan, which supports student outcomes and human capital, we're requesting funding for one additional elementary assistant principal to support the administrative leadership, daily operational duties, and the growing student needs of two of our elementary schools, Norwich Elementary and Matoka Elementary. This chart shows our three largest elementary schools, the September thirtieth student enrollment and the number of assistant principal allocations. Stonehouse Elementary has eight hundred thirty students with two assistant principals, which equals a four hundred and fifteen to one ratio. Matoka Elementary has six hundred five students with one assistant principal, and Norwich Elementary, full Title I school, has five hundred seventy-five students with one assistant principal. Next, let's look at the division data per each of the three school levels. We currently have ten elementary assistant principals across the nine elementary schools with four thousand eight hundred fifty-three students, which means a four hundred eighty-five to one ratio. Our four middle schools have a total of eight assistant principals with two thousand six hundred ninety-two students, or a three hundred thirty-seven to one ratio, and our three high schools have nine assistant principals with three thousand seven hundred seventy-nine students, equalling a four hundred twenty to one ratio. Adding one additional elementary assistant principal for a total of eleven would reduce the overall elementary division ratio to four hundred forty-one to one. This additional elementary assistant principal would be split between Matoka Elementary and Norwich Elementary, supporting those administrative duties, daily operational needs, leadership, and student needs of both schools. And now, I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Ewing.
Our mandatory expenditures related to Goal Two, educational equity, include six special education teachers and five and a half special education teaching assistants, as presented at the last meeting, to serve our current special education population. Also related to Goal Two are eight FTEs to support the restorative center to serve students with social, emotional, or behavioral needs. Four of these positions are currently on staff to support the refocus program, and four positions are anticipated to be added second semester to support the reset program. The WJCC Restorative Center, the newest addition to the division's non-traditional programs, began a phased-in opening during the first semester of the current school year. The refocus program, the first of two programs in the Restorative Center, provided services to twenty-eight students who were not meeting success in their comprehensive school setting due to social, emotional, or behavioral needs. Students in the refocus program remain in the program for an average of nine weeks before beginning an intentional transition back to their zoned schools. These students are followed by staff from the Restorative Center for six to eight weeks upon their return to the comprehensive setting with additional support provided as needed. The reset program, which will house up to an additional twenty-four students daily who are serving short-term suspensions, is currently slated to open near the start of second semester. This program will provide academic and behavioral support to students during their suspension. Ms. Wall will now share an additional request related to Goal Three, communications and engagement.
Before Ms. Wall jumps into her position, this was the alternative education setting that we started last year. The school board, previous school board was very interested in us having a program of this nature. We researched, we developed it over time. We started very small, but the positions to actually get it off the ground were funded through the SOR grant, and to continue it, they now have to commit to the operating budget. So we may have some decisions at some point to make as to whether we do all of this, we do some of this. Obviously, the first part of it is going very well and serving a lot of students already.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. WJCC Schools is fortunate to employ George Rivas, our full-time parent liaison community outreach coordinator. Mr. Rivas is an invaluable member of the communications team, though his impact is felt in every building and every department across the school division. In short, his position serves as point of contact for Spanish-speaking families, helping them navigate our school system and engage in their child's educational experience. In practice, Mr. Rivas participates in all IEP and eligibility meetings where interpretation is needed, processes registration for any incoming Spanish-speaking family, translates documents and forms, interprets day-to-day meetings and calls between staff and Spanish-speaking families, and participates in events like leap nights and curriculum fairs to help Spanish-speaking families access our programming. In alignment with Goal Three of our strategic plan, we are requesting funding for a part-time bilingual liaison specialist to support this critical work. While the data displayed here is not meant to indicate that Mr. Rivas supports each one of these students and their families, it does illustrate how the Hispanic, EL, and students with disabilities populations have grown over recent years, which directly correlates with the populations that Mr. Rivas most frequently serves. In looking at one specific function of the job instead of population served, consider new student registrations. From the second day of school to October twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, WJCC Schools registered one hundred and eighty-six new students, twenty-six of whom identified Spanish as their home language. Over the same period in twenty twenty-three, WJCC Schools registered two hundred eighty students, forty-two of whom identified Spanish as their home language. While the proportion of Spanish-speaking families to the whole is roughly the same, the workload supporting Spanish-speaking registrants is carried by one person versus general registrations spread across all building registrars. Registration may feel like a task typically contained to the summer and early fall, but realistically, we have families moving into our division year-round. Since the week before winter break to present, twenty-two new Spanish-speaking student registrations have been processed or are pending. While no two days are identical, they are always full. In a recent three-week sample of his schedule, Mr. Rivas averaged about fifty-five hours of work per week. Nearly half of his time in this three-week window was spent in meetings with students and families, including IEP meetings, student support, and registration. He tallied an average of fifty daily phone calls or text interactions to respond to families and staff. To meet the demand of family needs, we have brought on additional support at nine hours per week during William &amp; Mary's academic year. Combined, the work of Mr. Rivas and this contracted support person already spanned the equivalent of one and a half positions. Adding a bilingual, adding a part-time bilingual liaison specialist is critical in continuing to meet the mandated and essential needs of our students and community.
Related to Goal Four, safety and security, and shared at the last meeting, expenditures include an increase in contractual services for our visitor and emergency management system, as well as our radio maintenance agreement with neighboring localities. Also related to Goal Four and shared at the last meeting, expenditures include funding for ten security officers, nine at the elementary schools, and one transitioning from SOR III at the high school level. While we will again pursue the grant opportunity for the elementary officers, we need to plan to include these in the operating budget if we want to continue to have security officers in the elementary schools in case we do not receive grant funding for next year. Dr. Worley will now share additional information related to the high school security officer.
Just before Dr. Worley jumps in, Dr. Keever, with regard to the timing of the grant, do you want to speak to that, and how we managed to keep this operating last year?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to. The grant reapplication process generally begins in the latter part of the spring, which puts us in the May timeframe to apply for the grant and a June award of the grant. This past year, we went forward with the grant process. We were re-awarded the grant because this is actually two of our grant award, and were able to ask for additional funds from year-end spending from the county to be put towards helping us ensure that we could bring these security officers on board, because at that point, we were awarded the grant, the operating budget had already been approved.
Correct, and also, the first year of the grant, it was fully funded. It was a grant, and that was wonderful. We put the positions in the school. The second year, we had a matching element based on our LCI, which ours is high, we get less money from the state, so I can't remember the exact amount of either of you. I don't know if you have it in front of you right now of what we had to ask the county for from year-end funds to actually match, to actually, to receive the grant. Do you have that figure?
About two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right, and so this covers everything, because we don't know if we have the grant. I've also already reached out to the county and city about the matching funds, if there is still money still available in year-end funding to match the grant funds should we be awarded the grant. So we've asked already, we're waiting on a response. It's hard to give a response when we haven't got the grant yet, but there may be another way to cover this, but we don't know at this moment in time.
Can I ask a question real quick? What is the grant award based on?
It was a safety and security grant. Dr. Keever, you want to speak to that?
That's right. It would seem that those number of school divisions that apply were awarded some amount of fiscal appropriation. The grant award probably is altered based on the number of school divisions that apply and whether or not it's a continuation of the program, or if you're just starting a program. So for instance, two years ago, when we first went through the grant process, we did not have school security officers at the elementary level. We felt like that was something that was important to us in terms of the threat, risk, vulnerability assessment, and that was part of our grant application, which I think was received favorably at the state level, giving us that initial grant award. So if there are other divisions that don't currently have school security officers and they move forward with a grant application, they may bump ahead of us in line because we, you know, we've started that process.
Madam Chair, maybe something as we advocate at the state level and go to visit our legislators within the next week to mention this grant funding and the need to keep the grant funding to keep these positions in every elementary school if security is important at the state, because it's certainly important for us.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This slide shares data on security staffing in our high schools and surrounding school divisions. Reading the slide from- Reading the slide from left to right, you will see the name of the school division and the total enrollment for the division, the average number of security officers supporting each high school, the estimated high school enrollment numbers, and the ratio for security officers to students. The addition of the additional FTE high schools brings our average ratio of 1 to 377. As a division, we continue to enhance best practice in all areas of our work, including the safety and security of our schools. Our school security officers are an essential piece of the puzzle. This position is currently funded through the ESER grant, and we are proposing we move this to the operating budget for the 24, 25 school year. The additional FTE is currently assigned to Warhol High School. Warhol has the largest high school population and is the largest facility with 47,000 square feet more than, with more than Jamestown and 34,000 square feet more than Lafayette. We do not, we do see a need to increase the FTEs over time across all high schools, but this additional FTE gives us flexibility to have security support in other schools at the high school level as necessary as needs arise. Now I'll turn it back to Ms. Ewing.
Before we move into the next piece of the puzzle, which I think starts to speak to conversation, I do want to pause for a minute, think about some of the positions that we've just presented to you. Two are brand-new. One is the new assistant principal at elementary school. However, for about six weeks, Mr. Walker, of this year, if you want to give us some details on that, we actually had to bring an administrative substitute into these two buildings to, to be able to function well. If you want to give us some details on that, just to give a sense, even though it didn't exist, we had a temporary person in doing the job last year for part of the year.
We were fortunate enough to locate two retired elementary school principals with many years of experience that we were able to bring in and support Norridge Elementary, Matoka Elementary for about the last six weeks of the school year, performing various administrative duties, leadership, helping with student needs, and so forth, and it was greatly appreciated. That was roughly about $13,000 over those six weeks, and just looking at that, thinking about as a temporary assignment, and retired administrators only working a few days, possibly a week, but we would prefer to have a full-time elementary assistant principal versus a temporary contract.
Also, the other position that's not in the budget right now, that's not our current level of service, would be the parent liaison specialist that Ms. Wall spoke to, and if you remember, she mentioned that we were contracting with a person from William &amp; Mary who works for William &amp; Mary or is a student.
A student pursuing their PhD.
And so that student is covering some of Mr. Rivas's responsibilities right now. Basically, for those who know Mr. Rivas, we need to clone Mr. Rivas to, to address the needs of our, our English, English language learners. So we're already covering some by contract, we're not asking for something that we are not already contracting out for to help serve our, our families and students.
I think there was an additional question, and maybe we'll pause.
Absolutely.
See if anyone else, Mrs. Donner, did you have a question?
Sure, I have two questions. One for you, Mr. Walker. How does that work in practicality of having one person split between those two buildings?
The two current sitting principals would really sit down and kind of iron that out, potentially a three-day schedule, two-day, three-day, two-day versus some of our schools, maybe an A/B schedule. They would just have to really work that out and look at their needs, but they could do it. I know they could.
And then my second question was for Ms. Wall. If I'm listening to all of the things that Mr. Rivas does, and particularly, I'm thinking about our responsibility for having Spanish translation and IEP conversations and, and kind of all those things that he's serving, how does that work in practicality of him being able to schedule to make sure that he's in all of those things plus the registration? I mean, it just seems that there has to be places where he needs to be and he just physically can't be, and, and what does that put us at, any sort of a liability of not being able to provide, to provide those services to the Spanish-speaking students and community?
Sure, it's certainly a dance, as you're alluding to, to schedule his time as efficiently as possible. Technology has helped. Often, the meetings that I'm referring to, he's participating in via Zoom so that he's not losing time traveling back and forth between places. Certainly, though, there are occasions where in-person support is preferable and, and better serviced than conducting a meeting over Zoom, so we do balance that. You're absolutely right that the federal and state legal requirements take priority, so unfortunately, that means some things do get left on the table. The contracted support that Dr. Heron mentioned has been a value add, but we still are, look every day and every week at his schedule to make sure that he is accommodating as many needs and certainly those legal requirements as best we can.
Thank you.
Mrs. Henley?
Yes, I have a question. The Restorative Center, is there a ratio for that, for student to teachers?
Dr. Ryan, do you have that response?
Yeah, so currently, there are 13 students in the Restorative Center at this time. The average enrollment has been around 15, and then for this year, there's been 28 total students. Right now, we've averaged about three teachers, and the dean of students providing support for those, for those students. We're actively seeking behavior specialists and also teacher assistants that have been allocated, and we're awaiting applicants for those positions.
Okay, and then the last question. With the ELL students, does William &amp; Mary offer any kind of interns that would, internship for helping out, or is that something we can't do because they're, due to confidentiality or something?
I think the contracted person may be in that status. Do you want to speak to that, Ms. Wall?
Sure, the contracted person has, like I said, a huge benefit to us, and they, as our employee contracted, are able to take on some of those responsibilities. Their focus mostly is on registrations. In full disclosure, there are former teachers of ours that is pursuing their doctoral degree, so they had already established many relationships in the school community and are supporting that. We have considered and, and tried to identify opportunities for other support, like document translation, for example, where maybe it isn't as tight of a turnaround, but a form that needs to be translated, where we could have that taken off of Mr. Rivas's plate and added as an experience or a paid opportunity for students.
Mr. Riffle, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm actually going to go back to the principal part with, I think the state averages, isn't 601 students for the assistant principal type positions?
I believe so. Mr. Walker's going to check his notes first.
I checked your state code, I think it's 601, yeah.
Yeah, the standards of quality do state ratios for that, and I believe middle schools and high schools, it's one assistant principal per 600 students. The standards of quality, by the way, are the minimum state expectation. For elementary schools, the state minimum expectation is one full-time assistant principal per 900 students.
Great, I just wanted that to be mentioned for the public, and then I also want to mention that Norridge Elementary is getting close with 25 students, close to that 600 threshold, right? So the reason why we're going for Matoka is it's above the 600, 605 students, right? So actually, we'd be curious to see the middle schools and high schools in the future, if that could be presented, you know, at some other time, just to see how close we are to that threshold, because these are the impacts that our division has to take on its own, like SOQ does not help us on these positions, right? So trying to make that known to the public, that we are kind of alone as a locality for these positions, and it's important to know that where we are for the high school and middle school levels as well, so.
Yeah, Mr. Riffle, that's a great question, and, and I think last year, Ms. Ewing did do an analysis of how many counselors are SOQ-funded, how many locally we're paying for, how many teachers are, we get funded from the SOQs, and how many we pay for locally. Teacher assistants in particular, we fund most of those locally. So there's a huge burden on, on our local government to maintain a quality education, because the standards of quality and the monies that come from the state would never begin to fund a quality education in Virginia, and that's exactly what the most recent J-Doc study stated very clearly.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we move on to the next portion?
I do want to mention two other potential positions that I, we have not brought forward tonight, because everything here is either maintaining current service, or in two cases that we just talked about in more detail, the need has been expressed because we've contracted other people to do part of a job. We also talked in November, before the new board came on board, and about a pilot program to extend our gifted program, James River Elementary School, where we were looking at identifying talent and gifted students in, in our elementary schools, and there was a great desire of the former board to add to that program and extend it to two other schools. So those are currently not in this, but it certainly is something we would want to do as an organization to extend the pilot program that we have in James River. We will send you the link to that presentation for the information of new board members, so you're aware of that as we continue discussions.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I think we can continue?
Okay. So as I mentioned earlier, the governor's budget proposes the state's share of a 1% bonus payment in fiscal year '25 for funded SOQ instructional and support positions. A 1% bonus for all WJCC staff costs approximately $1 million. State funding in the governor's budget would support approximately $371,000 of the cost, requiring $629,000 in local support to be able to fund this expenditure for all WJCC While the governor's budget provides funding for a 1% bonus payment, there is flexibility for school divisions to receive the state funding that certify a minimum average 1% bonus or equivalent action will be provided to all instructional and support employees in the division. A 1% base pay increase provided by a school division would meet this requirement. For WJCC, every 1% of salary increase costs the division approximately $1.2 million, including fringe benefits. This chart shows the amount of local support needed from the localities to be able to provide a salary increase for all staff ranging from 1% to 3%. A 1% increase will require $828,000 in local support, and a 3% salary increase would require $3.2 million in local funding.
Put a pause for a moment again. So we, we have the funding in the governor's budget for a bonus, 1% bonus. It's $200,000 more to turn that into a 1% salary increase with a little bit more from our localities, you'll see between the two slides. With the 1% salary increase, obviously, that goes towards retirement, it's much more significant for staff than a one-time bonus that you give and disappears. So I just wanted to give a sense of, of where the board might stand and, and think about that possibility, because certainly it's something that, that I am most likely going to propose.
Can we entertain a question now, or would you rather?
Just to get some, some general input would be wonderful, yeah.
Mr. Hoseng, did you have a question?
Just a quick question. What is the definition of eligible staff? Who are we talking about here for, who would be receiving this?
We're talking about contracted employees, full-time and part-time. It would not include substitutes, for example. It would be cafeteria workers, custodians, bus drivers, all of our contracted staff.
And the reason we're showing a 1 to 3, I don't know if you recall from last week, we showed what it would take to be competitive, for teachers especially, within our region, and how we're actually behind right now at certain points of the scale and even as a first-time teacher, and so we are showing you what it would take to be competitive, as well as just talking about a bonus or a salary increase. So just, just two things, just like to get your, the general sense of what the board could support moving into the, the process. And I should add also, the 2% and 3% right now, because it's not in the governor's budget, the locality would be paying the total amount.
This is a discussion? Okay.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Riffle.
I think it's fair to assume that the House and Senate will move towards some type of raises for these positions. There are a couple bills that actually address the standards of quality part of this. I'm fairly certain that, that those people are, will receive at least some idea of the financing committees in the future about how that will look, and then the physical impact actually Commonwealth-wide, and then how it looks to each division. So I, I'm, I'm, I would say like, we should probably move away from the 1% and move towards 2 to 4. That's typically what we see in these type of biennial budgets, and I would probably, let's be on more of the safer side, so 3% would be something I think we should actually relatively see, and then SOQ actually would be quite diversely different because they're trying to fund those differently. I don't know how SOQ overall would look, but there's a lot of bills that address that, and I'm assuming budget amendments to follow this Thursday. I actually will talk about this in my, my minutes later at the public hearing, just to kind of give an update, because I think that's something I do in my day job, and it's kind of fun for me, I don't know, but I think it's important that we think about this, this is not how it's set in stone, like the governor's budget is amendable, it is unlikely to receive almost everything that's in it, so.
Thank you. Did you have something, Mrs. Donner?
I mean, I just, it's nice to have an insider. I mean, I am in support of converting that 1% bonus into a 1% salary increase. I think, you know, we want to continue to show our commitment to the faculty and staff in the division, and, you know, inflation and, like, cost of living adjustments or something that kind of every other sector gets, and I think that that is something that, you know, our teachers are also deserving of, so, you know, however we can make the math, math would be helpful, but I am, I am in support of that recommendation.
Anyone else?
I think the salary, 1% is going to be better received than a 1% bonus for the, for your comments and, that all Kevin's made previously. If it were made, I'd rather have the salary than the bonus.
I also agree with that. Mr. Hoseng, did you have any thoughts on, just generally on this slide?
No, not at all, thanks.
Okay.
Can I add one more comment?
Sure.
I think it's also safe to assume that, that it's, I don't know, 1% as a raise is something that you should do to remain competitive in the space we're in right now. I don't, I think, as we talk to our funding partners, like, we're not the only people doing this, right? It's like, there are other school boards that are neighboring to us that will do this and more, right? So 1% is kind of the threshold here, so I, I'm glad we're moving towards that action, but that's important to, that's just the foundation, I think, here as we move into this next biennial, so.
Mr. Riffle, you're exactly right, because other divisions have already come out and said, yes, they're thinking like us, we will do a 1% raise rather than a bonus because of the, the money's not that different, and it means so much more to, to people with retirement and everything.
So we're just really quickly, it's, it's great to hear that, you know, we're starting to coalesce on the same page, because we are the, the foundation for advocacy, whether we're talking to legislators or our funding partners, and if we stand behind what we need to remain competitive as a, as a united front, as a board, that's, you know, certainly step number one, so that's sort of the purpose of pulsing the, taking the pulse right now, so I'm glad we're, we're moving in the same direction.
Other compensation considerations related to Goal Five, and previously shared at a presentation in November, include an average adjustment of $1 per hour for support personnel in grades four through eight to ensure our pay grades are comparable to other divisions. Some on the support scale may receive less than a dollar, and some may receive more than a dollar. The estimated cost is $908,000 and includes the additional benefit cost as well. The second item for consideration and also shared previously in November is an additional competitive adjustment to the teacher pay scale. The proposed amount includes an additional $1,000 for steps 10 through 16, $1,500 for step 17 through 24, and $2,000 for step 25 and above. The total estimated cost is $1.1 million and is inclusive of the additional salary and benefits for this proposal. Another item for consideration is a regrade of our related services positions from a grade 19 to grade 20. This includes our speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists. We have paid over $300,000 to date for contractors to provide these services with an anticipated amount this year of $900,000. We have seven openings currently in this area, and this regrade will increase our recruitment and retention efforts for these critical staffing areas and decrease the division's reliance on utilizing these contracted companies to maintain the required level of services as required through student IEPs. In each year, human resources reviews one or two employee groups to ensure employees have been placed appropriately in their pay scale range, based on their experience and among other employees within the same category. based on their experience and among other employees within the same category. This year, the focus will be on clerical staff and school security officers. And please note, this is a placeholder amount of 100,000. The Department of Human Resources will provide details in a closed session meeting in May pending budget approval for these funds.
Put a pause for a moment again because this brings other compensation considerations to the table. A lot of discussion last year about minimum wage. We cannot keep people in the role of custodian and cafeteria worker. So those positions are included and of course bus driver as well on grades 4 through 8. So the idea is to increase the hourly wage to try to attract more qualified applicants to those positions. A lot of discussion with teachers on the, especially experienced teachers who our salaries are well behind at years 5, 10, and 15. And this, we've done a lot of some analysis and this is adding money to those parts of the scale to retain teachers in our system as well. The one you heard about this costing a lot of money this year would seem like probably the most important thing we're talking about tonight because 186,000 is going to save us money in contracted services for related services. So lots to think about because there's not a single thing that we're talking about tonight that's not important to either retain staff in the division and keep us operating as is and even make us more competitive. And if we're really talking about a budget of need, we probably need to do all of it. But I really want your input so we can collectively move together to come up with a budget that we can all really support and advocate for both locally and beyond.
Mr. Riffle, did you have a question?
Yeah, I actually wanted to know if this, the estimated cost reflects potentially the minimum wage going up in Virginia with the 1350 this year.
We raised our minimum to 1350 in the current year, yes, sir.
And if you notice, it says an average of $1 an hour. So looking at the needs and where the most openings are, we may go to 150 or we may go to under a dollar depending on the greatest need in a specific position. So it's very much data-driven should we choose to include this in our budget this year.
Mrs. Donner?
Thanks. I appreciate you sharing all these and I think that point around the 186,000 saves us. It sounded like we're paying, I think you said 900?
Projected.
Projected and current is?
Current to date is around 300,000.
Right. So I mean, I think that that is just a, you know, important delta and, you know, for the public, the way that we pay for those contracted hours is because we don't have those staff positions filled. And so by being able to actually staff them with staff as opposed to contracts, that saves us money. I think the other piece that I've heard, you know, particularly around teachers and our ability to retain them, particularly as they get towards the end, I shouldn't say the end, but as they've become more senior and they're looking towards, you know, what it looks like for retirement is, right? If you go to York County and you end your career there, when you're looking at it from a retirement perspective, that is more lucrative and makes more sense for the last three, five years of your employment as opposed to staying with WJCC. And so at that stage, we are losing very well-qualified teachers because of that. And so I think that pay compression, where I know we've spent a lot of time on the front end of the funnel making sure that we are competitive for new teachers coming and that was important. I think we do have to look at those that are kind of mid-career and towards the end of their career to make sure that this still becomes a competitive place to stay and that that salary compression, you know, starts to spread a little bit more.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner.
I love the bus drivers.
Any other comments or questions at this juncture? All right, let's move on.
And the custodians.
Have you seen what they have to clean up?
Mr. Baker is now going to walk through some information related to health insurance.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the school board and Dr. Heron. On this slide, we show the total cost of a 10% increase to healthcare, which is 2,555,270. And then the budget impact of a 70-30 split of the increase with WJCC absorbing 70% and employees absorbing 30%. And this would be a budget increase of 1,788,689. We've also provided the cost impact of a 50-50 split with the increase shared equally. On the next slides, we will show you what the annual increase in healthcare would cost as compared to a potential salary increase. As a reminder, for employee-only coverage, WJCC pays 8,688 annually on the employees' behalf. And the employees' annual amount varies depending on the plan they select. So on the left-hand side is the employee only. In the middle is employee plus spouse. And so for employee plus spouse coverage, WJCC pays 13,788 annually on the employees' behalf. And the employees' annual amount varies depending on the plan they select. And for the family coverage, WJCC pays 20,784 annually on the employees' behalf. And the employees' annual amount varies depending on the plan they select. Also on this chart, we show currently there's a spousal surcharge of 75 a month. And currently, we have 557 employees covering their spouses on our plans. A potential surcharge increase of 25 a month would generate an additional 167,100 annually. On this slide are a couple of examples of what the employees pay monthly on a new health insurance and how what the plan they select can lower their monthly health insurance cost. On this slide are a couple of examples of what the potential 1% raise for teachers would look like alongside a proposed increase in healthcare costs in our Centerra HMO plan as well as our Key Advantage 250 deductible plan with a 70-30 split. The net annual salary increase for a Step Zero teacher with employee-only coverage on the Centerra HMO plan would be 281. And for a Step 14 teacher, the net annual salary increase would be 342. On this slide are a couple of examples of what the potential 1% raise for custodians would look like alongside a proposed increase in our healthcare cost. The bar graph has not changed from the previous slide. The annual salary change for an entry-level custodian for the employee-only coverage on Centerra HMO would be 17. And for a midpoint custodian, it could be 89. The information on the previous two slides considered several variables, including different health plans, varying coverage regarding your family, if you're a teacher, if you're a custodian, or how many years of service you had. As we consolidate all those variables into one slide to consider the net annual impact of a 10% increase in healthcare and splitting that increase 70-30 with a 1% raise. So on the left-hand side is a master's level teacher on Step Zero. It could mean a net annual impact between 281 to a negative 607 per year annually. For a master's level teacher on Step 14, it could mean a net annual impact between 342 to a negative 546. And then the third column there is for a custodian at the entry level. It could mean a net annual impact between 17 to a negative 871. And for the midpoint custodian, it could mean a net annual impact between 89 and a negative 799. Be happy to answer any questions about the potential 10% healthcare increase.
At our last meeting, we were showing a variance of between 10% and 15% potential increase in health insurance. We have had an update from our health insurance provider and we understand that we'll not go above 10%, so that's the good news. The bad news is it's still very expensive.
Any questions about the healthcare portion right now? No? Do we know what is driving that increase? We had such a big increase last year that was, I think started out at 15.
I think we came in, yeah, actually at like 9.9%. And I think we're projecting between 5 and 10%, which is on average with the national trend for health insurance increase.
I think it's driven by whoever is claiming health insurance in any particular year and they do an analysis of all of that to come up with an increase as well as looking at the market across other areas as well.
We think you'd have a pretty good pool. I mean, we have a lot of elderly and most people are fairly in good health, I would imagine.
Yeah, I do believe there are some years we've had zero. The last years with COVID and other illnesses within our school community, I think it has increased because of that. But generally, we have an aging population in education as well.
Okay, I think, it looks like we're ready to continue, okay.
This table shows a comparison of the split in total compensation between salary and benefits for surrounding divisions. The information is from approved or adopted budgets for the current fiscal year. We spend approximately 69.5% of our total compensation budget on salaries and 30.5% on benefits, which is slightly higher on the benefits side when comparing to our neighboring divisions. I do want to mention that the benefits information includes all benefits paid by employers, including VRS retirement contributions, social security taxes, and workers' compensation as examples. So it is not just health insurance information presented here. A salary increase impacts all employees, whereas health insurance impacts only those employees that have coverage with the division. As the division assumes more of the increased health insurance costs, the amount we spend on benefits will continue to rise.
I could just add before we draw this piece to a close, that last slide was particularly important because I think some input from the board as to where to put a limited amount of funding. Do we put it in benefits or do we put it in salary? As Ms. Yuen said, if you put it in salary, every employee benefits. If you put it in health insurance, only those who take the health insurance actually benefit from it. Last year, we had a, took a 70-30% split of the increase. We could potentially look at others as well, but it really depends on what the salary increase is because you don't want an employee to go out with a negative paycheck compared to this year. So lots of things to think about as we move into this final stage of budget discussions. And certainly we'll be asking you that question and having some input from you as soon as possible.
Mr. Riffle?
Are we allowed to speak on it now?
What's that?
We can speak on it now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I think just looking at the, you know, 28% and then 71, it's likely that some of the partners are competitors, right? Will do the opposite. So like if we do 1%, they're going to do 1% towards benefits, right? So it's fairly, you know, it's been rising like that across maybe the past couple of years. It's been like that as we increased, you know, the 5% and 4% right last year. I'd be more towards the 70-30 for salary or its percentage. Even moving towards a higher number for salary because we need to remain competitive in that space. We're 3% behind Hampton and that's on me like 25 minutes down the road, so.
Here, is that just the way the numbers work out or is that intentional goal? Is that split designed or is that just the way the money falls?
I think it's just the way it falls, but it's, as you see, we're all within a range of the same because most employees in school divisions pay a large percentage of benefits for their staff and that's part of the attraction, that's part of our attracting new staff members to our organization as well. Other thoughts on the balance between salary and benefits? This is a question we actually asked our whole staff last year and I think there's an opportunity to ask again. Where do you, if there's a limited amount of funding, where do you want us to put the emphasis? Is it salary? Is it benefits? Is it additional support personnel in the classroom? Whether it be an assistant principal or reading specialist or whatever it is. So I think there's an opportunity to ask again where all of our staff would place the funding if it's available.
Okay, let's continue.
Moving on to Goal 6, here you will see the expenditure increases previously presented related to organizational efficiency and effectiveness. These total approximately 535,000. These include contractual increases for trailer leases, audit and risk management, as well as an increase for utilities. Also related to Goal 6 is the additional funding to support the alternative transportation services contract. We propose reducing bus driver FTEs by 15 and bus aid FTEs by 8 to support the increased cost of the contract. This does not affect current staff. These are positions that have been vacant that we would not fill and the funding and salary and benefits would transfer to contracted services. This slide under Goal 6, organizational efficiency summarizes the savings presented under prior goals. And you will also see a reduction in central office department budgets of 300,000. We've reviewed the funds remaining in central office department budgets for the past three years and this amount represents approximately 30% of the average amount left in department budgets. Our total identified reduction amount is approximately 1.6 million.
So this is part of our preliminary analysis of how we can look for money within the system to meet some of our needs, which I think is really important to do when you have a major ask of our local community and our local funders. The central office budgets, we did look at school budgets as well, but they were mostly used. And because the facilities money for school budgets is in the school budget and the volatility of electricity and fuel and things like that, we didn't want to touch those budgets at this time.
Mr. Hoseng, did you have a question?
Regarding the bus driver, the 15 positions that we're cutting, we still do have a bus driver shortage though, correct?
That's correct and there still are remaining unfilled positions even with taking away those 15. And I think Mr. Snipes can speak to it. We looked at what we've never been able to fill over the last number of years and what we would optimally need to keep our system running. And we believe we can reduce it by 15 and still operate our system. And so using that money to pay for contracted services that currently exist makes sense in a savings.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we weren't basically sort of shooting ourselves in the foot where we need bus drivers, but in the same breath, we're taking away the number of bus drivers that we are going to find.
Maybe, Mr. Snipes, would you speak to the total numbers and taking this number away, what we're left with? We're still actively recruiting and can still fill positions that we don't have right now.
Yes, currently, we have about 102 bus drivers. Typically, we average about 100 to 102 every year. We have 131, 132 routes. Ideally, it would be nice to have a driver for each route. By removing these 15 positions, it allows us to be able to continue the contract with ever-driven, which can, which takes our McKinney-Vento and some of our special education students. We are under contract with ever-driven. However, we can always reduce that contract if we are hiring drivers back. So if Ms. Yuen may be able to speak to this, if we decide that, hey, we can find drivers for those, we can then remove that money from the contract to hire more drivers. So we're reducing that to help fund the ever-driven contract, but we'll always be able to hire additional drivers.
Does that answer the question for now? Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? I think we're coming to the end, so.
We are, yes. So to summarize everything, our preliminary state revenue increase as compared to our fiscal year 24 budget and based on the governor's introduced budget is approximately 1. And based on the governor's introduced budget is approximately one hundred twelve thousand. When you compare the estimated increase in state revenue of a hundred and twelve thousand to our expenditure adjustments. Which range in amount from eight point five million to ten point nine million, depending on the salary increase that is provided. And the health insurance increase, the total shortfall amounts to approximately eight point four million to ten point eight million. Which will become our request to our funding partners. These amounts do include everything that's been presented this afternoon, including those additional compensation considerations. Um, I do want to say that these are adjustments that are being considered for the superintendent's proposed budget, which will be presented on February twentieth. We are continuing to gather data and cost estimates for various items to finalize the superintendent's budget proposal over the next several weeks. At the last work session, I shared that the average increase over the last past ten years from localities that we've received is around two and a half percent. If we assume a two and a half percent increase or two point five million from localities. Then the additional funds we would need to request could range between six million and eight point two million. Again, these numbers include everything presented this afternoon. Upcoming dates in the budget process include the presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget on February twentieth. A public hearing on March fifth. There will be a joint budget work session with our funding partners on March fifteenth. And then the budget will be presented for your approval on March nineteenth. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
All right, I know that was a lot to take in and we, we also covered some, some questions along the way, but any? Questions, anything we wanna go back to, we have, we have time.
Assuming you don't get it all, you have priorities, I presume.
Um, that's why we're beginning to ask questions of the board as to what you would prioritize and yes, we are certainly prioritizing as well. It um, uh, we hope the General Assembly will give more money to public education. This is the least we've ever had. Um, a lot of that gap could be filled with more money.
There's a lot of rhetoric.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Did you, Mr. Riffle, did you have something? No. Okay, it looked like you were about to say something. Anyone else while we have the uh twenty minutes left? No? Okay, well, I think, uh, is there any final comments from you, Dr. Heron? I know you've said a lot, but.
Thank you too much.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much for, for your input this evening, really appreciate it.
Okay, then this uh budget work session is adjourned.